Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors. Today is Thursday, December 17th. It is 8:30 a.m. We are in the Bob Boldrick Theater in the community center at 851 East Williams Street. Can we have a roll call, please? Aubrey?
Supervisor Giomi?
Here.
Supervisor Marylect Bagwell? I'm sorry. Supervisor Barrett?
Here.
Acting Mayor Bonkowski?
Here. Thank you. Good morning, Nick. Could you come up and give us any indications this morning, please?
Well, and Merry Christmas, everyone. Let's pray. God, thank you for today. When rain comes and is the first rain of a season of being cold or dry, it always reminds me of the way in which you work in our lives, how you bring refreshment and cleansing to anyone who seeks you and to anyone who desires to know you. We thank you, God, for our community and the way in which you are at work through these public servants. We ask, Lord, that you would fill them with wisdom and strength, that you would keep them healthy and safe during this time. And we continue to lift up all of our law enforcement and our first responders. God, we ask that you would keep them safe during these times and that you would bless them and their families and provide for them in unique and special ways. Give us this day all we need to accomplish your purposes. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Nick. And while we're all standing, I would ask if we could please observe a moment of silence for what would have been Mayor Bob's final meeting of an incredible 12-year career. Thank you very much. Now, if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now on Agenda Item 5, our first public comment for the day. Desi, do we have anybody on the line for public comment this morning?
Yes, it looks like we have two callers this morning. Callers, when you hear the beep, it is your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Mallory Wilson. I'm just calling to congratulate Brad on his last Board of Supervisors meeting. I, you know, being his daughter, have seen a very particular view of his, you know, eight years as a supervisor. And, you know, I've just been really pretty too, seeing how hard he's worked for all of you and for the, you know, the city of Carson City. And I just, you know, I'm calling to say congratulations and also to let you know just how fortunate you are as citizens of Carson City to have had Brad on your team. You really couldn't have been more fortunate. And I know that he's done things that will definitely, you know, put the city in a better place going forward. I think that, you know, fixing things like roads and pipes and providing, you know, things for children and taking care of things like the budget are, you know, things that are extremely important. And I'm very proud to be Brad's daughter and to have seen the things that he's accomplished as supervisor. So I'm just calling to say congratulations.
Thank you, Mallory.
This is Andy Wilson. I'm a Carson City citizen and I'm also Brad Bonkowski's partner. I'm Brad's biggest supporter and I'm also his loudest critic. And I just wanted to call in to really acknowledge Brad because it turns out that on top of being a really excellent partner and dad and stepdad and papa and chef and cookie maker and a world-class landscaper and an absolutely brilliant real estate advisor and spider monkey handler, turns out he's also a top-notch RTC Campo Committee Chair. He's a ridiculously thorough Carson City supervisor. And just when we all thought you couldn't add one more thing to your plate, you stepped up suddenly and sadly to serve as the acting mayor in the midst of a pandemic. And you did a really good job of that. I have no doubt that you made Mayor Bob proud. Today should have been his last meeting too. And I know that in the midst of all you're doing today and what you've done, you haven't forgotten that today is really about Bob and his 12 years of distinguished service as mayor. Brad, your tribe is very, very proud of you. And it has not gone unnoticed that while you were being amazing and studly, you were also pretty much constantly being attacked by some of our dimmer citizens for basically not doing what they told you to do at any given moment simply because it was in their best interest, despite your hundreds of hours of research to determine the truly best direction for the city at large at any given time. And you never lost your patience. You never declined a single meeting or phone call with any citizen, no matter how irate or ill-informed they may be. Even Andy Ingleman, who wanted to throttle you when she first met you, ended up being a true friend and supporter. And that lady who called you a month or so ago, who I told you to throttle, you met with her. And by the end of your meeting, she was the president of your fan club. So your people are in awe of you. We love you and now we want you back. So I hope you have a great last Board of Supervisors meeting. As I've told you before, every board meeting for the last eight years governed well. And I'll meet you tonight with the tequila that you deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Your checks are in the mail, by the way. Is there any other public comment?
There is no more public comment.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 6 for Possible Action, Approval of the Minutes. If the supervisors had a chance to read those, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of November 19th, 2020 with two previously submitted typo corrections.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Vote is 4-0 to approve. We are now on Agenda Item 7 for Possible Action, Adoption of the Agenda. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Any member of the board have any changes? Seeing none, we will consider the agenda adopted as presented. We're now on the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda first. Is there anybody that wants to pull any items from the consent agenda? All right, then I would accept a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Vote is 4-0 to approve the consent agenda. At this point, we will recess as the Board of Supervisors and allow Dr. Pintar to walk up to the stage. And we will call to order the Board of Health.
Good morning. Thank you. I will call to order the Board of Health. Roll call, please.
Member Furlong? Member Bonkowski? Member Barrett? Member Bagwell? Vice Chairperson Giomi?
Here.
Or I'm sorry, Chairperson Pintar.
Here. Thank you. Everybody's present, even Kenny. All right. Do we have any public comment for the Board of Health?
I see no public comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Then we will go on to Item 15, which is Approval of the Minutes of October 15th. If people had a chance to read those. If so, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Health for October 15th, 2020 as presented.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to Item 16, which is a discussion and presentation from Carson City School District. This is being introduced because of the cooperative efforts between the school district and the health department. And we thought it would be important for the supervisors and the public to be aware of what's going on to keep everyone safe. Nikki?
Richard Stokes from the Carson City School District should be on line.
Good morning, Nikki. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
There you are.
Great. Am I on then?
Living color.
Perfect. Well, thank you, first of all. Dr. Pintar, good to see you. Members of the board, thank you for inviting me today. It's my pleasure to spend a little time. I too just wanted to add my thanks for the service of Mayor Kroll and certainly Mr. Bonkowski and truly all of our public servants. It's my honor to be your colleague and I thank you for your contributions to our community. Just in retrospect, the last official business that I had with Mayor Kroll had to do with our being the recipients of the CARES funds, at least a portion of the CARES funds that were received by the city. I just want you to know that those dollars were put to good use. We had the ability to help fund some of our staff members who were putting in extra time with nutrition. Our nursing staff had to learn new skills and we've been utilizing them to test many of our staff members. We purchased some materials that have been very helpful. We had no way really of doing contact tracing on our transportation department buses. And with the help of those CARES Act dollars, we were able to utilize an electronic system that helped us to manage our ridership in a better way, especially as it applies to students that may need to be quarantined or identifying who is actually on the school bus at any given time and just a variety of other things. And I just want to say thanks. And of course, Mayor Kroll was such a great enthusiastic supporter of the school district and we appreciate that. When Nikki asked me to say a few words about what we're doing from an educational perspective in town, I was really happy to do that. And I've heard Supervisor Brad talk a number of times. He always jumps right to questions first rather than waiting for the end. But I thought, rather than do that, I'd give a little bit of background and let you know some of the things that we're trying to do from an educational standpoint and also from a health and wellness standpoint for the children of our community. As you can imagine, last March, when the schools were closed down across the state, we knew very little about the virus. We knew very little about jumping from a system that had been developed over years into a new system of remote learning, online learning, and then even adjusting to the desires of parents who wanted to homeschool their children. And so we were really tossed into a condition that was much different from how we usually operate. In July, our trustees elected to use kind of a two-tiered system. One was full remote where students using technology would be able to access their curriculum by staying at home for the entire school day. In some cases, we were able to support this effort by our own teachers. In other cases, where the curriculum is a little more specific, say, for example, at the secondary level where maybe a student is using an advanced placement curriculum, we purchased online programming. And those online programs are actually supported by the teachers that are employed by the online program. So there's kind of a variety of remote systems. But really what that means is that the student doesn't come on campus at all, but they learn and are supported in a remote location, whether that's at the Boys and Girls Club or whether that's at their home or at a neighbor's house where maybe there's daycare being shared between two families. The other part of our two-tiered model is a hybrid system. And that's a combination of in-person, on-campus learning and remote learning. So those two conditions are combined in the hybrid schedule. So we actually have that face-to-face, in-person learning that happens twice a week. And then three times a week, the students are remotely placed. The reason that this was established, again, takes us back to that time when we didn't know a lot about the virus. We had no data. Many people believed everything that was being said in the press. And there was this underlying fear that if you got COVID, you were going to die. And that was causing a lot of fear, a lot of reticence in having families wanting to bring their kids to school, difficulties with just having enough staff who felt comfortable enough being around school-aged children and other adults to do their jobs. So it was a tricky thing. And there were a lot of members of our community that feared what was going on. And so we started out in this hybrid model and in this remote model, giving families an opportunity to select which way that they wanted to go. And we started. We've learned a lot since then. We've now been in the school process for nearly a whole semester. We are getting ready tonight, actually, to bring back, or at least to have the discussion among our board, to bring back grades three through six. Back in the first nine weeks or after the first nine weeks of the school year had passed, we brought back to school our pre-K through second grade students. And they've been going four days a week. And that has made a big difference because what we were seeing from an academic perspective, that because our children were not being supported more regularly by in-person interaction with their teachers, we were having high numbers of absenteeism. We were having low numbers of student interaction. And we were really starting to see an alarming number of failures. And knowing that that failing piece is going to impact any student over any period of time. And so really getting our kids back to school is a high priority. But there are some governmental regulations that we're having to work within. Obviously, we're requiring all of our students and staff to wear masks. And then the conditions of social distancing between pre-K students up to grade eight is three feet per individual. We can do that in our classrooms. It's a lot more difficult on our buses. And then students that are in grades nine through 12 are expected to have that same six-foot social distancing piece as we expect our staff members or our adults to have. So a lot's been going on. I wanted to let you know that from a safety perspective, we're doing a little bit different work in our cleaning and sanitizing of our buildings. We have changed things, especially from an operational perspective. We had a standard-grade air filtration system. All of our filters now have been increased to hospital-grade filters. And those are changed out three times a year. We also are changing the air quality in our buildings three times a day. So as we get more and more people in our buildings, we evacuate the stale air or the air that's inside the buildings for fresh air three times a day. And the goal there is to run the air that's inside the buildings through that filtration system and bring in fresh air. Obviously, that was a little tricky during the fall of the year when we had smoky air. And, you know, there were just a lot of things that caused us to modify our activities every day and to modify our operations. Our custodial staff is spending much of their time in attending to the flat surfaces of our buildings and also those touch points. Obviously, if COVID spreads, as do other contagions that we're used to, when people sneeze, cough, touch, all of those things, doorknobs, desktops, door jams, any place where stair rails, any place where there might be people touching or handling those things, that's where our custodial staff is spending a bunch of their time. We've also purchased some materials. The goal behind these things is to actually kill viruses and bacterias that might be present in our buildings. And this is done in a variety of ways. But we do have foggers that are used. And especially after a case may be identified in our schoolrooms, those classrooms are closed down and immediately serviced by our custodians and re-sanitized. So we're spending a lot of time on that particular effort. We have found, over time, that even though our school-aged children are coming down with COVID-19, they're really not getting it at school. We're seeing most of their infections come from other places outside of school. So we actually feel pretty good that our schools are a safe place for our children and our staff to attend. And it continues to be that we live our lives. And so outside of school, it's a little hard to monitor where everybody goes. We realize that there are celebrations or things that happen where families get together. And it's just hard to say you can't do that. And so anyway, those conditions come back to school and then we manage them however we can. We've been in situations where we've had to quarantine staff. We've had to quarantine students. We've actually closed down classrooms. And on one occasion, we actually closed down one of our schools where we were unable to pinpoint where some of the contagion was coming from. And so we just did what seemed to be the appropriate thing. And with the help of the health department, we've been able to stay on top of things. Obviously, we've had cases and then we manage those in a way that seems to be working for us and will continue to do that. Our health department has just an untenable job in front of them. And we're so appreciative in the manner that they've been responsive. They've been helpful. They've given us guidance and direction. And so we've learned a bunch from them, but also recognize that they really can't do all this on their own. In addition to our cleaning and sanitizing, of course, our nutrition services folks are working a lot. Some of the services that we provide during any given day when many of our kids are not at school every day, then we're providing food, not only on the days that students aren't on campus, but also on the weekends. And so our nutrition folks are working extra time. In terms of trying to maintain student wellness at school, we knew that if we had sick children coming to our nurse's office for care and treatment, that might add to any potential contamination in our school. So at the start of this year, in addition to just having our nurses' rooms, we also created an isolation room. And that way, if we had any children that were demonstrating symptoms in any way that could be COVID-related, instead of having them go to the nurse's office, we had them go to an isolation room, which then was attended to by an adult, typically one of our administrative staff, so then we could contact our parents of that student so that they could come and pick them up. We've also been able to put together a number of supplies that help us throughout the district, whether that be disposable masks, hand sanitizer. We encourage hand washing. We have placed social distancing dots on the floors of our schools, in our classrooms. We've put dots on cafeteria seats showing students where to sit so that they are socially distanced. So we really have tried to use systems that have worked well in other places, systems that are working well for us. And then, of course, as things either progress to a different level or as we need to, we've been modifying those things accordingly. In other words, doing what teachers have always done and that's just monitor the conditions and then adjust as we need to. We are seeing a need for our students to be in school and around their peers. We worry about the social and emotional aspect of our students' well-being. Our kids do well. They learn from each other. They learn from watching each other. They learn from watching students be corrected in school. And so it's important that our kids have an opportunity to be around each other so they learn how to act, they learn how to grow up, they learn how to engage in academic kinds of activities. And so we worry a little bit about our students that aren't able to attend with us all the time and just another reason for us to try to get our students back in school as much as we can. We also recognize that there are parts of our operations that need to be considered. For example, we have some specialty classes, PE, library, music. Those courses are sometimes held with quite large classrooms. And so our teachers have had to be very creative to provide activities and events that don't necessarily have the kids come back in the same numbers as before. If you think about the concern about, you know, spreading COVID-19 because you're breathing, well, it's kind of hard to sing or to play a musical instrument or even be engaged in a PE class. So it's been a significant effort for our folks to try to figure out how to do the active teaching and still maintain safety for the participants and for the staff themselves. We've also seen that as time goes on, conditions change. Our governor has modified a few things here and there and as have we. I mentioned that one, nine weeks into our school year, we brought back some of our kids to be at school four days a week. We are still having all of our students in the district on Monday receive remote training. And that provides some time for our teachers as well to learn how to teach from a remote standard and to also have time to prepare those lessons because it has taken a lot of extra time. We're also, as mentioned, talking tonight with our board. Looking forward to that conversation to hopefully bring back more students. So if the board approves what we're asking them to do tonight, we'll have our elementary schools able to return to school four days a week. And that will be a tremendous asset, we believe, to their educational opportunities. Now, the remote option is still going to be a solution. So if parents still choose or families choose to have their children attend remotely, that's still going to be available. But we're trying to expand that hybrid model so that students and families are able to have more face-to-face encounters academically throughout the week. I think that might be a good place for me to stop and to ask you folks if you have any questions. And I would certainly do my best to respond to them.
There are questions from the board members for Mr. Stokes? They're all nodding in approval, so.
Well, again, if I could just say, I greatly appreciate the support of the city. We feel very blessed to have the partnerships that we do. I can't say enough good about our Quad County health folks. They have been right there. They're easy to get ahold of. They're very responsive and helpful. And just greatly appreciate the contributions that they've made in helping us to get down the road in this really... that they've made in helping us to get down the road in this really unusual time for schools.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Stokes.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
We will go on to item 16B, which is for discussion of the collaborative efforts between the school district and Carson City Health and Human Services from Nikki's perspective, wherever she went.
Sorry about that. I'm letting people in. I've got Jeannie Freeman here, and we also have someone to introduce to you, so I'm going to let Jeannie take it over, and she'll explain that collaboration and introduce you to someone that's working very closely with the schools.
Good morning, everyone. Jeannie Freeman for the record. So nice to see all of you. It's been a while. Happy to be here. So thank you so much. And I do want to express our gratitude to Mr. Stokes and his staff. They have been incredible to partner with, along with the other school districts in the Quad County region. This collaboration, as you know, we started it back in August, even before school started, so that we could start having some of that dialogue and conversations about what this may look like and what would be some of those management action points. If something were to arise, if there were to be outbreaks in schools, how would we be coming together and what would we be discussing in order for those decisions to be made about closed classrooms or closed schools and that type of thing? Just in anticipation, wanting to lean forward into what we could do. Some of what we have been doing is every Friday afternoon at 3:00, we get on a call, and all of the school districts from the Quad County region, as well as our private schools, are on that call, along with emergency management, and our health officers have been invited as well. And we are able to talk about some of the current things that are happening within the region. So some of what we discuss, we learn from one another. So one school district might be facing a particular problem, and they bring it up, and we discuss it as a whole, so that others can learn from each other, which makes it more collaborative, but then also helps us kind of prepare for how we want to do things. As you know, the cases of COVID-19 have increased within the region and in Carson City over the last month and a half. We certainly have seen those numbers go up quicker than what we had seen in the past. And as a result, we had to modify some different things in how we were responding to schools and how we were able to serve what was there. And they were very amenable to what we suggested, and they gave us some ideas, which allowed us to have a collaborative process, which was so appreciative of what we could do and really wanting to make sure that we were still serving our stakeholders and making sure that they were getting what they needed from us. Part of what that meant is that we felt that it was important for us to hire somebody who would be dedicated to the schools as a school liaison and be dedicated to doing the investigations and leading the investigation so that we could have that responsiveness that Mr. Stokes spoke about. And so what we did is we hired Tara Barnett, and I have her here with me today. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to wipe down the microphone and everything so that she can come up and she can introduce herself to you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Freeman. So as Jeannie said, my name is Tara Barnett. I am the new schools liaison. I also have a background in public health. I studied epidemiology prior to attending medical school for a couple of years. I recently left in 2019 and have been blessed with this opportunity to help and fill this gap and help with the schools and investigations when applicable. Yeah, does anyone have any questions for me?
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Tell us what you do every day, Tara.
So I receive reports from the school district point of contacts, and I keep track of who's being reported sometimes because of a little bit of lag in lab results. As the COVID cases have gone up, we've had obviously a big burden on labs and hospitals. So a lot of times, they're able to report those to me prior to us finding out, and then we can expedite that process even quicker and make sure that the people that need to be contacted relating to school investigations are contacted as soon as possible. It's kind of a team effort.
Thank you.
Of course.
Other questions for Tara? Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for having me.
Jeannie, I have a question. How long is Tara's position anticipated to continue?
We have funding for Tara's position until the spring of 2022.
Thank you.
And then I would just like to add, this is Nikki Aker for the record. Tara is from UNR and is part of the contract that we'll be discussing later in the meeting.
That is the end of my report related to the collaboration between schools and CCHHS.
I couldn't understand what you said.
I said that is the end of my report for the collaboration between schools and CCHHS. I apologize for not articulating myself properly.
Thank you. I'm the mumbler, not you. All right. Thank you very much. Seeing no areas of question, we will go on to item 16C, which is Nikki Aker's report as Director of CCHHS.
Good morning, Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. So I want to start my report. Last meeting, you all saw the Columbia Suicide Screening Tool, Train the Trainer. We had a training yesterday, and in that training, there were 22 in attendance, and this was all done virtually, so we're safe there. So the following agencies participated, Carson City Health and Human Services, Carson City Juvenile Services, Carson City School District, Carson City Senior Center, Carson Tahoe Behavioral Health, and it was the group that is responsible for the assertive community treatment, or you'll hear the acronym ACT, which means Ad Assertive Community Treatment, Connections Behavioral Health Center, FISH, Ronwood Family Resource Center, State of Nevada's Rural Clinic, State of Nevada Department of Welfare and Social Services, and UNR Master's of Social Work student. And I just want to remind you all that getting the screening tool out and training our community is a chip initiative. It's under the behavioral health priority. So any questions on that? And of course, we'll continue training individuals so that they can screen for suicide. I will move on to the legislative efforts and bill draft requests. So we've got the Northern Nevada Behavioral Health Policy Board that was created in one of the legislative sessions. There are now five of them throughout the state, and our board, our sheriff, our sheriff is on it, along with myself and others from the area. Each of these boards gets one BDR, and two years ago, the Northern Nevada Behavioral Health Policy Board put forth a bill that cleaned up some language in NRS 433A, which is the legal hold process. There, it came to our attention that, especially in the rural areas, there was some real problems with the way that legislation or that law read. And so, and even our hospital in our community had some real issues with going forth with the legal hold process, the way that bill, or, excuse me, the way the law read. So that was passed, and this go-around, there's still some language that needs to be cleaned up and some different language that needs to be added to that. And so what they're looking at for this session, it's governing the use of chemical restraints on persons with disabilities, establishing procedures for holding a person on and releasing a person from a mental health crisis hold, revising provisions, governing the emergency admission of a person to a mental health facility or hospital, and revising provisions, governing involuntary court ordered admission to a mental health facility, and involuntary assisted outpatient treatment. So this is the way it's presented now. As we know, there will be changes in March. My plan is to bring our coordinator, Jessica Floodian, and she can explain more about this and also some other things that the policy board is working on. So I just wanted to let you know about that. And we're a part of Nevada Public Health Association, and they have a governance and legislative committee that works on many different things. If you remember last session, they were really an advocate in support of the Public Health Improvement Fund. The priority list again this year includes some type of establishment of a fund and funding for public health, as we've seen through this pandemic. You know, the funding and support is not there at the state level for Nevada, where one of the lowest for state funding. So we'll be working on that. It's going to be a hard year to get any of that through, but we don't want to stop that momentum. So right now, they're working on the 2021 advocacy agenda, and that's in draft form right now. So I'll bring that back in March when that has been approved by their board and let you all know exactly what the association is working on. And I have brought with me a Susanna, and she goes by Suzie. She is the coordinator of our tobacco prevention program. And the, if you all remember federally, the T or Tobacco 21 passed, and there's a provision in there that states need to have a bill that mirrors that. So I'm going to let Suzie talk about what the Nevada Tobacco Prevention Coalition, which you'll hear the acronym, NTPC, that's what that means. We were trying very hard not to use acronyms within our presentations. Sometimes they just roll off our tongue, but I'm going to let you all know what's happening there. So I'm just going to clean off my mic, and then she can sit here.
My name is Suzie Ledesma Rubio for the record. I am the Public Health Program Specialist for the Tobacco Program at Carson City. Currently, we are working within the Nevada Tobacco Prevention Coalition to collaborate with the AG's office. Right now, there is a bill draft, right now called AB 59, that will raise the age from 18 to 21 to meet the Tobacco 21 standards. We are still working for that modeled language with the Public Health Law Center and other organizations, so that is still being worked on as we speak. Is there any questions?
To clarify, Suz, that's for purchasing tobacco products, right?
Yes. As of right now, AB 59 does state the purchase age, and that's why we're working with other agencies like the Public Law Center to get that modeled language to kind of make a more up-to-standard Tobacco 21 bill.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can I clarify on that? Are you saying that it was federally passed to be age 21 to purchase tobacco, and then each state gets its own implementation?
So as of right now, federally Tobacco 21 is for the sales age. As of right now, AB 59 states purchase age. So we're looking for that modeled language to clarify that moving forward.
The distinction I think you're trying to make is between sales and purchasing, right?
That's correct. So right now, we're trying to take away any penalties to the purchaser and put that on the seller.
Is that clear? With crayons, yes.
So are they envisioning, then, the system that they currently use for alcohol, where they would require ID to purchase tobacco products, and retailers would have to post the signs? I mean, they do kind of all that now, right?
It's something similar to that that we're looking at. It is something where they're trying to kind of make a balance. They don't want to take away jobs from those merchants who are 18 or between that 18 and 21 age range. So we're trying to find some middle ground, so that's why we're looking for that modeled language to be able to do that here in Nevada statutes.
Other questions for Sue? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's worth noting, and we've said this in the meetings earlier, that the tobacco use rate in Nevada has fallen quite nicely, and that last statistic I saw, we were down to like 18%. As little as five years ago, we were well into the mid-20% of people who were tobacco users. So there's been some nice progress made there.
Have you, this is totally off-subject, but just curiosity, have you seen any correlation between marijuana use and tobacco use, and one affecting the other?
No correlation between tobacco and marijuana. No.
Okay. Just curious.
You know, the fight that we're fighting now is, of course, the vaping. And I did hear a report just lately that the vaping has decreased among our youth, but, you know, that could be contributed to our youth staying home and not attending school, so they don't have those opportunities. So it will be interesting to see what happens with that once our youth are back in school. And that's within Suzie's program. You know, they also focus in on those youth and vaping. We got the, what was SB 263? That was the taxation on the vaping products and vaping, anything associated with vaping. And some of that tax money has been distributed to the local health authorities, and so they provide presentations and different activities around the vaping and our youth. Okay, so then I will give an update on our re-accreditation efforts. As you know, we were accredited by the Public Health Accreditation Board in May 2016, and we are getting ready for re-accreditation, excuse me, re-accreditation. Right now, there are 70 measures that are currently in progress. That's 70 out of 90, so 77%. That means that they're either drafted, being drafted, or the person who needs to draft them has been reached out to and asked to work on it. There are seven measures that have been finalized, so 7%. These measures are mainly the plans that we have in the department, such as our Quality Improvement Plan, our Workforce Development Plan, and we review them annually, and they will be reviewed again before re-accreditation. There's not going to be many changes to that, but we do revise and update on an annual basis. We have a documentation committee that we just recently instituted. We found during the accreditation process that this committee was very helpful in looking at the documentation from a different set of eyes and making sure that it met the intent of the standard. The first meeting of this was this past Tuesday, and I'm very excited that our deputy city manager, Stephanie Hicks, agreed to be on that documentation committee.
that documentation committee, so that someone from outside of the Health Department can look at it from a different set of eyes and make sure that it's understandable, because we live this and breathe this every day. And it's, what seems to be understandable to us may not be understandable to somebody else. I do want to note that the surveyors that come and the ones that will be looking at our documentation and will be speaking with individuals in the community and individuals within our Health Department are from other Health Departments, so they do have that background. But we need to make sure that our narratives are understandable. So then, if, any questions on any of that?
So in general, from your report, are we on track? Is that the gist? We're on track to make it on time?
Yeah. And they did extend it, that our documentation can go in as late as September. That is not our goal. Our goal is to do it much earlier. It's between April and September. Of course, we want to get it done well before September. Again, we've been working on this a long time. It seems like you get your accreditation, you maybe get maybe a year off, and then you're right back at it. But a lot of this stuff is ingrained within the Health Department, so.
Oh, sorry.
Nikki, is the process for reaccreditation the same as accreditation where you turn in the submittal, and they'll do an evaluation on that? They'll give you feedback, and then they send a crew out to look at facilities and talk to staff?
The reaccreditation process is very similar in that we don't have as many standards to meet. It is a tougher process, because we've got to show how we've progressed in the last five years. A big difference is them sending a survey crew out. It will be done virtually. And we will have a chance that if they feel that one of our measures does not meet the intent, we do have a chance to resubmit any documentation or further explanation. And from other Health Departments that have went through it, like I said, they have indicated that it is a tougher process.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, and next, I'm going to let Jeannie provide the COVID-19 update this time.
Good morning again, Jeannie Freeman, for the record. I do promise that at some point in the future, I will present to you about something that is not COVID-related. So COVID Surveillance, as you know, when we come and we speak with you every two weeks, I'd like to give you an update about where we are on those previous two weeks. So the two-week period that I'm going to be discussing with you today is November 29th through December 12th of 2020. So this takes us right after Thanksgiving until the, you know, a little bit of time after that Thanksgiving period. In the Quad County region, during that two-week window, we saw 2,496 new COVID-19 cases. This is an 11% decrease from the previous two-week period in the region. For that period of time in Carson City, 1,362 confirmed cases of COVID-19 were reported. This represents 55% of all the Quad County cases, and it was a 5% increase from the previous two weeks for Carson City. When we look at the seven-day average, which is one of those things that we look at, because I know that we report each day how many cases there are, but in order for us to look at how holidays and weekends and things impact, we look at what the number of cases are that we typically see each day over an average. And in Carson City, we were reporting approximately 97 cases each day. The average age for our cases in Carson during that time was 47 years old. During that two-week period, prison-related cases accounted for 33% of all of our Carson City cases. If we were to exclude the prison cases, and we were to look at what the exposure was, 39% of people identified that their exposures were community-related. We saw that household-related and facility-related were the next two most popular identified areas. And our facilities include our long-term care facilities, our nursing homes, rehabilitation centers, and other live-in facilities that provide medical support. So it's important for people to understand that. We did have some challenges with that. During that two-week period, we saw an increase in school cases. We have not been able to identify if that was related to the Thanksgiving holiday at this point in time. We're still doing that review to figure out where that was, but we did see an increase in school cases. And we experienced outbreaks, as defined by the state, where we had two or more cases that were not linked to one another, that were not connected to the spread from one person to another. That's how the state defines an outbreak. We had outbreaks at six locations.
Questions for me about some of that data?
Without revealing names, those six locations, can you talk about the nature of those? Are they homes? Were they care facilities? Were they businesses? Were they a particular kind of business?
Sure. They fit within what we saw those areas being with facilities that I mentioned, and then definitely Department of Corrections, you know, and that type of stuff. Those are where we were primarily seeing those kinds of locations.
And are you still keeping numbers on the number of people who are self-reporting that they are going to work or school symptomatic?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't-
Is that number still ridiculously high?
Yes, to answer that.
I don't have that in this report today. I'm sorry. I do know that we have, we do have a gap in the data currently, and part of that is when we had that huge surge of cases.
Just the numbers, yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to get caught up on that right now.
Thank you.
So I apologize for not having that today.
I think my question really followed up on something that Mr. Giomi was discussing, because the protection that employees had for being out with COVID and getting paid for two weeks, that ends December 31st. So I really would like that number to see if we're going to start, if it's going to get worse, because the protection of their payroll ends December 31st. So unless, of course, it gets, but I don't see it in the extension bill that's out there and being discussed. So I'm just interested in watching that statistic to see if we start seeing even more outbreaks within some areas, because there's no, I can't get two weeks of pay if I get COVID.
Sure. Some of the things, some of the things that we are looking at doing at CCHHS is that now that we have physicians like Tara hired to help with the schools and be that liaison, then it's allowing our epidemiologists to start looking at what some of those other reports are, and we're going to start pulling out and going back and then moving forward, looking at what some of those trend analyses are, right? Where were we at this point? And then also mapping them along with what some of those other elements that came into play, like when directives came into play, when Carson City was identified as being on a, being as an increased transmission, you know, and see where some of those, and one of those things that will be on that trend will be when the federal protection for the coronavirus family, or, yeah, whatever that whole thing is.
Or initials.
When that goes away. And so we want to start doing that, because that is part of the story in our community, and that's important for us to not just throw out numbers, but look at trends, and then look at how different things might have potentially impacted those trends, knowing that we cannot isolate any one activity or one point in time as having all the impact on there. There are certainly other dynamics, holidays, school being out for two weeks and that kind of thing. So we will take that into consideration, but that will be part of the story, and we will continue to bring that back to you.
Jeannie, could you touch on Carson Tahoe's capacity, if you know where they're at right now, and then also maybe talk a little bit about the vaccine rollout? I believe the Moderna vaccine is in front of the FDA today for approval?
Yeah, sure. So that was all part of my report. I just, well, we'll move right on into that. Thanks for the segue. I appreciate it. So-
Sorry, I thought you were done.
No, no, I've got plenty for you today. So Carson Tahoe Hospital certainly has been experiencing surge within the healthcare facility. We know that they have stopped elective surgeries at this point in time, so that they can handle the surge. They have identified that the surge that they're experiencing with patients in the hospital is similar to what we typically see in January and February during flu season, and we're already there at the end of November and beginning of December. That surge is not completely connected to COVID-19. Certainly, COVID-19 is a factor that is in play, but people still get in car accidents. People still have other things that occur, heart attacks and that kind of stuff. So it's important for us to make sure that we're putting that into relevant terms. Then about a hospital association puts out statistics on a regular basis related to what the hospital's capacity is. And we do know that they are finding that they have more cases in their intensive care units. They have more cases that are requiring ventilators or oxygen capacity and those types of things to help them with the recovery. What we have seen, not just across the state but nationwide, is that people are doing better. We're getting better at recovering people, even if they do go into the hospital with COVID-19. And so that's a positive, and I think our medical field has learned a variety of different things about how we can do stuff and how to promulgate that. Did you have a question, anything beyond that?
Yes, ma'am. Or just kind of to put on the record, I'm getting a lot of people in the public that are concerned about what's considered elective surgeries, and that they really need, they really need their surgeries, that they're in excruciating pain, and what's happening is they feel like they're being just given opiates to deal with it, and that we're going to see a different problem as we come out of this, that now we have more addicted individuals. And so I just put that out there as, you know, is there any possibility or things that can happen to help relieve some of these chronic terrible pain that's just waiting for an in-and-out? One guy told me about a robotic surgery. He says, I don't understand why those are canceled. So I don't know if we can reach out to the hospital just to explain why, even if it's a one-hour in-and-out surgery that generally doesn't require an overnight stay. Why are those being canceled? So just-
If I could chime in a bit, I think the simplest answer for you all to respond to those questions is staffing. It's not a matter of the physical bed or the physical equipment, but there is definitely a shortage of registered nurses, of physicians who can manage ventilators, of respiratory therapists, and of all the support personnel. And so we get those questions and understand that. But as I say, I think that the response is, a person can only be spread so many ways, and the hospital has to prioritize that. And the person who comes in with COVID needing a ventilator is going to be prioritized, sadly, before somebody who has a quote-unquote elective surgery. We are, I understand, we all understand that what is elective in one person's eyes is not elective in another person's eyes, and that's, there are hard, hard decisions having to be made.
And I did see a report just lately that, yes, we're seeing an increase in opioid use. So.
All right. So before I get to the vaccine, I want to share some other exciting news out of CCHHS. Back on December 8th, we went live with our results portal, and that has been incredible. Such an incredible partnership with IT to get that going. And that results portal, in the first week, there were over 9,300 interactions with the results portal from the public. And so what that means is that people were checking the results portal in order to, we didn't test that many in that time, but people were checking the results portal to be able to get their results, which allowed them to get their results faster, even though we could have called them and given them their results. They were able to access them and print them off and be able to give them to their employers or to the schools or whatever they needed, and they would be able to get them faster. Speaking of that, the state lab has been better. Their turnaround time for results is now three to four days instead of the six to seven days that we were at. So that is an improvement that we have seen these last three weeks that has been quite beneficial for our community as well. So very pleased to have that. The public has been very receptive and appreciative of the results portal. We've had a lot of really positive feedback that has come into the call center, which usually the call center gets the calls of, I'm angry, where do I do this, and that kind of stuff. We have people who are making an intentional effort to call in and say thank you, which is a really nice difference to have from time to time, so we appreciate that. But the results portal does seem to be positive.
Jeannie, maybe you could state for the public how to access the results portal?
So the results portal, you can actually go onto the GetHealthyCarsonCity.org website, and you can click on our COVID-19 web link that's across the top in the red banner. And on there, at the bottom, it tells you that you can click here to access the results portal, which also segues into the other item, is that two days ago, we went live with our COVID vaccine page that is also accessed there, that can give you current information about the vaccine. It links to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Food and Drug Administration with the status of where they are related to approvals of vaccines. And the frequently asked questions that we have on that page are the same ones that the CDC has. So when the CDC updates their FAQs, it automatically updates our page. So it is not something that we have to maintain in that effort. On that page, we also have a box that will tell the public which tier we are currently vaccinating. So Carson City Health and Human Services will follow the state's vaccine playbook to a T. We will follow every tier and all the dynamics associated with that. And we've had a lot of requests to be making alterations to the tiers, but we are following along with what the state has put forward, so that there is consistency across the state. And we will have on that box that will identify what tier we are in. We are anxiously anticipating today, the Food and Drug Administration is meeting and discussing the Moderna vaccine and that approval. If it goes like the Pfizer vaccine did last week, we would anticipate that they will approve it today, and that the Association for Immunization Practices will be approving the Moderna information, and then the Western State Scientific Board will be reviewing the data with Moderna, if it's approved, coming to Carson City Health and Human Services next week. We are scheduled to be pushing out the information for people who are part of Tier 1 to be able to register for a vaccine date, so that allows us to plan for staffing and so forth. There is a lot of work that goes into this, but we have this excited buzz going on over at Carson City Health and Human Services to be able to provide another service to those in the community that want it, and to be able to do that in a timely fashion and to do it well. So we're excited about it, and we're ready. And I told you guys several months ago, sorry, I told all of you several months ago, that we were prepping. We had bought syringes, we had bought supplies and stuff, and even though the vaccines come with supplies from the federal government, we did anticipate that there wouldn't be, but we will be able to support even if they don't come, because we didn't want to get caught with the region not being able to do the vaccinations if supplies were in short order. So we are paying attention. Today is an exciting day to find out whether or not we will have another vaccine coming in this direction. If Moderna is not approved, then we will continue to work with the state when it comes to the allocations for the region to find out what comes, and then we will get it out there, and you maybe can. So.
We get what we get, and we don't pitch a fit.
Well, we might pitch a fit, but we're not going to do it publicly.
We might pitch a fit.
So we are definitely working through that. There is, it has just been an incredible collaboration with providers within the community. Staff at Carson City Health and Human Services have been making calls to provider offices and making those contacts, making sure we have the point of contact and we have accurate information, so that when that comes available, we are able to get that information out to them. Our staff participate every Tuesday night at 6 o'clock on a call that's called Doc Talk, and they are able to answer questions for our providers in the region about when the vaccine's there, where they're going to get vaccinated, how that's going to work. And we have had some very positive feedback from healthcare providers, that they appreciate that we're making ourselves available at a time that's outside of normal business hours, right? There's really no such thing right now, but that's outside of the typical eight to five. We're making sure that we're available each week, and we've had similar types of- We're making sure that we're available each week, and we've had similar types of calls with our first responder agencies within the region as well as others that are getting ready for Tier 2, which is a very large tier to be vaccinated, and we've been reaching out to those folks already as well, because we anticipate Tier 2 to be starting sometime in January. And when that occurs, that will be a large number, and then we're still, we're still on track, the way that things seem to be going in the country, to be looking to vaccinate the general public later in the spring. Questions for me?
Other questions?
So when you talk about that we're receiving the vaccines as Health and Human Services, is anyone else in the community receiving vaccines?
Yeah, great question, I appreciate that. So Carson Tahoe Hospital has received, they've been receiving the Pfizer vaccine, they had their first delivery of Pfizer vaccine earlier this week, and that is designed for them to be able to vaccinate their staff, their frontline staff.
They actually began vaccinations yesterday.
And then we also have, we worked with the state to get other providers set up so that they can vaccinate their own staff. So there are some larger provider offices and our federally qualified health center that have been signed up, and they will be receiving vaccines so that they can vaccinate theirs. The pharmacy program, Walgreens and CVS, has been signed on with the federal government, and all of our long-term care and skilled nursing facilities have been set up with those partners so that those agencies will vaccinate their staff and their residents, because they were identified at the top along with the frontline healthcare workers. And our goal is to make sure that it's accessible to who it needs to be accessible to, and as these agencies become available and doing those vaccines, and they will be other agencies that will be helping doing the vaccination with the general public when that time comes as well. So it's really, it's really the development of a larger community collaboration in making sure that when it's widely available, that it can be accessed.
If I can follow up, I think that's what I'm trying to get to. Will the doctors' offices be able to have vaccinations, that they can help us with the general public?
Eventually. Right now, there is a lot of backend paperwork and data entry, and the timeframe of the data entry is very restrictive and the storage piece. So a lot of times, doctors' offices will eventually be able to do that. The rollout right now from the federal government is that it goes to the hospitals directly, it goes to larger providers, it goes to health departments to be able to do at this point. Eventually, I would anticipate it being like any other vaccine, the healthcare providers will be able to order it and have it in their inventory and be able to give it. We still don't know whether or not this is going to be a vaccine that you get on an annual basis, or if this is going to be one that you get every couple of years. There's still the science that's going on behind that, and they have to monitor it for us to be able to know that. We're not sure on that at this point.
And Jeanne, assuming that the Moderna vaccine is approved today, is there going to be a process where someone can choose between, say, Pfizer and Moderna, and then the additional vaccines that roll out as we go forward?
Thank you for the question, that's a great question. I know that that is definitely one that the public has as well as our Tier 1 and Tier 2 entities. At this point in time, no. It will be what comes to us. So when we, if we receive Moderna vaccine, and we put in our orders every week of how many doses of COVID vaccine we anticipate to give that week, and when we put in our order, we only get to say that we're requesting 3,000 or 4,000 COVID-19 vaccine doses. It becomes up to the state to determine what comes to us and what is allocated to us and which product is allocated to us. And that is in part based on how the federal government is allocating doses to the states. And so the feds allocate to the states, and then the states will allocate to the different entities that are getting it. So at this point in time, because there is not enough vaccine one way or the other, there will not be the option to choose. We will, of course, let people know when they're making their reservations at this point as to what vaccine we will be using, but it won't have that choice option at this place, at this point in time. When we look at that, though, is that if we order 1,500 doses, and we got 1,500 doses of Moderna, the state is already tracking that we are in four weeks going to need 1,500 more doses of Moderna. I know that the FDA said, when they approved the Pfizer vaccine, that, or I should, it wasn't the FDA, ASIP said that once you get a dose, you can get another dose, they didn't matter one way or the product, and that's not really the direction that anybody is taking in the healthcare field. The manufacturers recommend that you get the same manufacturer product, and that's the process that we are going to be taking. So when we place an order for 3,000 vaccines, the state's already logging that we're going to need 3,000 second doses of that product four weeks from now. So they are anticipating that, and that's how we're going to track it, too.
And as the vaccines are given, is there a guide sheet or a verbal consultation with the people getting vaccinated so that they understand that they're not going to feel well for one to three days after they get the vaccine?
Yeah, so there is a vaccine information sheet that they will be given, and we will ask them, it's not, it's not the typical V I S, it's the manufacturer's information sheet that comes with it. So it's the manufacturer's information sheet. We will have that available for them, they will get that, we will ask them to review it before we actually give them the vaccine. And then when we give them the vaccine, they are required to stay there for 15 minutes because most adverse reactions are going to happen within that first 15 minutes before we will release them. Then there is another, it's a smartphone application that the government is asking for people to sign up for, it's called V-Safe. And the idea of that application is for people to be able to automatically put in any side effects or symptoms that they're having or effects that they're recording so that the government can kind of track what that was, and they will enter in which product they got, if they got the Moderna or they got the Pfizer, and it's just a way for us to kind of be aware of adverse events. We also have information on our website about where they can report adverse events, because like with any vaccine, if there are adverse events, there is a place to record that, and then we will ask them to also let us know so that we can track that as well.
I can tell you that of the Tier 1 agencies like ours that are getting vaccine or will eventually get vaccine to their providers and first-line folks, they're already doing education within their organization. And that's one of the reasons the rollout has staggered the way it is, so that as healthcare practitioners get that, they become aware of what's going on, and there are plans in place. For instance, the hospital is not vaccinating everyone at one time because of the fear of the, not fear, the natural reaction, you know, they don't want to have one, all the ICU out with fatigue, you know, the day after they get the shot. So almost everyone who's already getting it has done rollout with their staff on what to expect, what it's going to look like, and most of those larger providers are already providing or developing in-house materials to hand to their patients once it eventually gets to the public at each level so that they have the information on what to expect after you get the vaccine.
I also wanted to mention that I've been doing some presentations to community groups or to long-term care facilities with basically the same, that same sort of information, that, you know, a little 20-minute spiel about what the vaccine is, how it works, and, you know, encouraging people to get it. So if there are community groups that want to hear my spiel, I'd be, you know, they can contact me. It's also important to know that there are two other types of vaccines in the works that are protein-based vaccines, which are more similar to the kind of vaccines that have already been in development, similar to the flu vaccine. And so we expect the amount of vaccine to basically grow exponentially as each one of those types comes up for possible approval. There was a concerted effort back in the spring to focus on the vaccine that was likely to be the fastest to be produced, and that was the mRNA vaccines. But there are two other types that a number of other companies are working on. So right now, there's a relative vaccine shortage, it's not anticipated that that will continue for too many more months, hopefully.
That's all I have for you today, are there any other questions?
This is Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services, so I just want to add a couple clarifying. So the patient portal is for the tests that are done with our agency. We don't provide that documentation for other agencies. And then also, as we're busy doing the vaccine rollout, we are still doing our testing events. So, you know, there's a lot happening. Now, and we will not, at this point, have any combined events with the flu vaccination, or excuse me, the COVID vaccination and testing. The testing and the COVID vaccination will be two separate events.
And as a reminder to the public, the next testing event is tomorrow at Carson City Public Works from 12 to 2:00, and then there are four more scheduled for the month throughout. This is also available on the GetHealthyCarsonCity.org website.
I have another general question. So if you've already had COVID in the last 30 days or whatever, should you get the vaccine or not, and let people that have not had it?
I think I have to answer that, as opposed to, just due to initials. They, you probably have up to 90 days to get the vaccine. A relative contraindication to receiving the vaccine is having been diagnosed with COVID within the previous two weeks. And so if you've had a diagnosis two weeks ago, yet you're in Tier 1, theoretically you could get the vaccine, but it's because of the relative shortage right now, you can wait up to 90 days. It's thought that the antibodies from the infection last probably 90 days, that may or may not be true, we don't know yet, but as I say, the real contraindication would be getting it while you have an active infection.
One last thing I would like to say is, I would like to say thank you to all the city departments that have stepped in and assisted Carson City Health and Human Services this last six weeks. There has been a lot of challenges that have come up, that have come up as the cases have increased, and numerous departments have stepped in. I am also very grateful for all the department staff that have come out and are being trained to be able to help with our testing events and be trained so that we're able to do those larger vaccine events when they do come available for the public. Every single department in this city has contributed and have been a very good partner with us, and so we're very grateful for that. And then I also want to say thank you to the different healthcare provider and agencies in our community that have come alongside us and have been helping with the information and the distribution of information related to the vaccine. It has been a wonderful collaborative, and it has really shown us the support that is out there from our community and from the city. So thank you so much for that.
And then I'll just add to that, too. You know, there's not many counties with different health officers that are going out and providing that information to the community. And, you know, that just shows that all the collaboration within the city with Dr. Pintar, our county health officer, what a great place Carson City is. Okay, so my last item within the director's report is the calendar of meetings and events for the Board of Health. You got this as printed material, I'll just highlight a couple of things, and I want to also state that our new supervisors, and they'll be our Board of Health members, are welcome to attend any of these also. So we've got our Affordable Housing and Transitional Housing meeting that happens the first Wednesday of each month. Mayor-elect Bagwell is very active on that committee, and we really appreciate that. We've also got the Carson City Behavioral Health Task Force. We had a meeting yesterday, and that is the third Wednesday of each month, and that is open to anybody that wants to participate. Both of these committees are, I did line out when I thought the next Board of Health meetings would be for 2021, with the caveat that those are subject to change. And of course, as we move forward, I'll be asking for the Resource Stewardship Advisory Group to reconvene with our new members. And then that would be, that group, it really looks at the fiscal components of the Health Department and can be an advisory. And then there's numerous other meetings on here. One thing I want to talk about, the Northern Nevada Behavioral Health Policy Board, that is where that one BDR is coming out of. These again are open to anybody to attend right now, that they are on Zoom as these other meetings are as well. And there is a National Association of Local Board of Health, it's an annual conference in August. I'm not sure if that's going to be virtual, kind of what I'm seeing with conferences right now is they're later in the year, they're giving a in-person, an in-person option and a virtual option. So any questions on any of that? And then I did indicate that we'll be bringing back, of course, the legislative pieces to you as the legislature is in session. And the next meeting, I would like to bring back some items from the Northern Nevada Behavioral Health Policy Board for your review and feedback. And then I would just ask you all if there's anything that you want me to work on in the future to bring to the Board of Health, and, or any information that you want me to bring.
Any input for Nikki right now? Then I will entertain a motion for acceptance of the director's report.
I move to accept the director's report given to the board.
Second.
Discussion, all right. All in favor of approval of the report, say aye. Opposition, nay. Motion carries and passes. That finishes item 16C. Item 17 is public comment.
I see no final public comment, Madam Chair.
I have some. Me?
You.
Oh.
I just didn't want to leave the meeting since your contract's through February. Our next meeting won't be till March, and I want to thank you for all of your service as our.
You're welcome.
Public health officer, and I didn't want to be remiss in saying and echoing something that Nikki said. Thank you for being so active in the community and doing presentations and really trying to give information to the public on how they can have better health, so.
Appreciate that, thank you. It's been an honor to be public health officer for 10-plus years, so I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you. All right, if that's the end of public comment, we will adjourn.
Madam Chairman, thank you. I want to say something before we quit this segment and echo what our mayor-elect has just said to you and say to Nikki and to her staff, I think you've done a wonderful job during this really difficult time. As Jeanne said before she left, the whole city and the departments have all stepped forward. I particularly wanted to take the focus for the moment off vaccine, although I think we're all very hopeful of what's going to happen, what we're in is a gestation period here, and as often happens in gestation where human beings are involved, this is going to roll out over probably the next nine months or so. Consequently, the contact tracing and testing that's been done in this community and in these four counties has been really great, and I'm sure is going to continue during that gestation period, because wearing masks, social distancing, sheltering in place are all very important, but contact tracing is a key part of this. So thank you for that, because this community and this region has done better because we've been proactive in that regard. So thank all of you, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Now we'll adjourn. Goodbye.
All right, we will reconvene as the Board of Supervisor, and we will stand in recess for five minutes. We'll be back at 10:05. We'll be back at 10:05. All right, Zach. We are now on Agenda Item 21A for possible action. Discussion and possible action regarding a proposed interlocal contract between the state of Nevada through its Division of Public and Behavioral Health of the Department of Health and Human Services and Carson City through its Department of Health and Human Services for the integration of two community resilience ambassadors into Carson City's COVID-19 response efforts to provide crisis counseling to the community through May 29, 2022, for no monetary compensation. Nikki?
Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. We did ask for some revisions on this interlocal, so I'll walk through those revisions that were made. On Page 1, we did add that the agency number two name is Carson City, gave the contact information of City Hall and the contact person of Nancy Pulson, our city manager, her phone number and email. So that's on Page 1. The next revision is on Page 5, and that is putting in our public agency number two as Carson City, Brad Bonkowski as the mayor pro tem. And then on Page 8, we had a correction under the first paragraph of CCP program capacity. On the first sentence, it read "one", and then in parentheses had "two" community resilience ambassador. It actually, it is "two" written out and "two" in the number. That is the number of ambassadors that we will be getting. And then on Page 9, under Carson City Health and Human Services shall, the first bullet point, it will read actively participate with the state CCP program by embedding crisis counselors, and this is where the new language comes in, into the COVID-19 process. On-site is deleted, and the rest of the sentence is correct. The next bullet point, the date, August 29, 2020, is deleted with the new date being May 29, 2022. And then on Page 10, under Division of Public and Behavioral Health shall, it is the bullet point that starts with "provide the mental health". It's towards the bottom, I believe it's the second to the last bullet point. That sentence will read "provide the mental health training and engagement with crisis counselor". The, it will, this has the removal of self and then hyphen. And that is the end of the revisions. So just a little background, what we plan to do with these ambassadors is we're not going to be requiring them to work on-site. We will give them city computers, and they will be contacting our positive cases in between the initial contact that the investigator does and the last contact of the investigator. So they'll be within that, probably about the fifth day, right around there, to check and see how they're doing and if they need any services, any mental health services. I know, you know, it's tough staying home, and there's been a lot of fear that has been built into this disease. So just having someone contact them and check and see how they're doing. Any questions?
Any questions for Nikki? I see none, so I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to sign the contract as amended on the record.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. Is it not the mayor pro tem that's signing now, based on the change that Nikki just read?
The mayor pro tem is signing. Just the contact is city manager.
That was listed on the record as a change for his signature.
Yeah, you just said authorize the city manager to sign, though, in your motion.
Oh, yeah, we want to change it to, I got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move to approve and authorize the mayor, acting mayor, to sign the contract as amended, because that's part of the amendment, right?
Motion is amended. The second continues. Seeing no additional discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Vote is 4-0 to approve the contract. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 21A for possible action. Discussion and possible action regarding directives and recommendations concerning Carson City departmental and staff functions in Carson City as a consolidated municipality in relation to the exercise of emergency powers pursuant to NRS Chapters 244 and 414 and CCM Chapter 6.02 for the purpose of ensuring the health, safety, and welfare in Carson City in response to the global coronavirus pandemic. Nancy, are you starting this one?
Yeah, I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to Stephanie. I just wanted to give an update on our COVID task force that the city has formed. We have meetings each Friday, and the members include several city departments, the Health Department, the Community Development Department, and the city manager's office, and Mayor-elect Bagwell. We have Dr. Solis, the WNC president, Erin West, the CEO of Nevada Builders Alliance, Alan Garrett, the CEO of Carson Tahoe Hospital, and Ronnie Hanneman, Director of the Chamber. All of the members on the task force are helping us get out information for, to the public promoting safe holiday gatherings over. We did one over Thanksgiving, and we have one going out for Christmas, and they are in both English and Spanish. And I'm sure everyone knows, but for the public, the governor did extend the statewide pause directives through January 15. And I think Stephanie has some updates on our COVID compliance coordinator position.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie Hicks, Deputy City Manager. First, I just wanted to give a quick update on our supply requests. So we have ordered another $300,000 worth of PPEs and sanitation supplies, should be arriving within the next couple of weeks. So that will help us with our stockpile efforts and the availability for the city as well as the businesses. As Nancy mentioned, we did hire our COVID Education and Compliance Coordinator. Rob Riccolo started with us last week, and his role is to assist businesses with compliance through education and consultation. So he will prepare our local businesses for OSHA inspections. He'll be doing field visits and advising the businesses if he sees any areas of concern. This is for Carson City only, so although CCHHS handles quad counties, Rob's role is only in Carson City. He's also providing signs and additional information about our PPE supplies. In his first week, he met with over 80 businesses, and we saw an approximate 92% compliance rate. Reception of his field visits has gone very well, and we've also seen an increase in requests for PPEs and supplies since he went out to those businesses originally. The last item I had, I just wanted to clarify. For the COVID testing event tomorrow, it is located at the Carson City Corporate Yard, not Public Works. There is a different entrance for the testing, so we're asking everyone coming to the event to access off of Airport Road, and the address there is 549 Airport Road. Thank you.
Yes, I've gotten quite a bit of feedback on Rob's visits, all very positive. It seems like he's doing a really good job. Anybody else that has?
I also, I just thought of one other thing. On the state COVID task force meeting today, I saw that OSHA is reporting that the, for the last two weeks in Carson City, that the compliance rate was 100%. So once again, great job, Carson City businesses.
All right, go ahead.
So have we looked into the product, the one gallon product, and have a correction for that? Because it's...
Yes, so the next order of the one gallon hand sanitizer is actually coming from a different vendor. So we expect that to be a different issue with the pump. But we also have requested from Silver State if there is an opportunity that they can swap out pumps or assist us in that, or if they have some sort of solution. So we haven't heard back, but we're working on that.
So do we have enough just to replace the people that already got the one gallon bottles? That we could just have our person go drop off a replacement to them on the new order?
When those come in, I believe we will.
I'm just suggesting that we replace them.
Sure.
You know what you had on your list, just go out and swap them. Thank you.
Do any supervisors have any items to bring up under this Agenda item? Are there any other staff members? No? All right. Well, that was easy. Doesn't look like we have any motions to present. So we will move on to Agenda Item 21B for possible action. Discussion and possible action regarding a proposed emergency ordinance establishing a moratorium on the collection of fees for the renewal of a business license. Nancy?
I didn't think you said Nancy. So at the last meeting, the board directed staff to coordinate with the DA's office to prepare a draft emergency ordinance that would establish a moratorium on the collection of fees for the renewal of a business license for calendar year 2021. So the proposed ordinance is attached in your packet.
Nancy, can you bring the mic closer, please?
Do you want me to repeat everything?
Yes, please.
So at the last meeting, the board directed staff to coordinate with the DA's office to prepare a draft emergency ordinance for the purpose of establishing a moratorium on the collection of fees for the renewal of business licenses for calendar year 2021. So that has been, the ordinance is presented in your packet material.
Do we have any questions on the proposed ordinance? Do we have a bill number and an ordinance number?
Bill number 116, ordinance number 2020-16.
Can you repeat that, Aubrey?
I'm sorry. Bill number 116, ordinance 2020-16.
All right, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll do it. I move to bill number 116, ordinance number 2020-16.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
So before I cast my vote on this, I just really want to explain my thoughts on this proposed ordinance. I think like everyone else on this board, it's a, we're all faced with the difficult challenges for our community and our local businesses. This pandemic has been hard on everyone, and the financial hurdles for business owners, especially our smaller mom and pop stores, are completely unprecedented. I know how hard it is to run a business even without COVID. I know because I've been a small business owner myself. That's why it's difficult for me to vote no on this ordinance. Although I understand the board's desire to provide assistance to our business owners who may be struggling to turn a profit or even stay afloat with all of these restrictions, I don't think this ordinance is the right vehicle to provide any real help. The average business license renewal fee is less than $200 for an entire year, and that amount of money is not going to provide any degree of relief. It simply will not make or break a business. But taken together, waiving those fees for 2021 could amount to more than $400,000 reduction in the city's general fund. We all know that the state's economic forecast is anticipating more than $1 billion in budget shortfall. At this time, we have no idea what sort of trickle-down effect this will have on our city. For as long as I've been a member of this board, we've prided ourselves on responsible fiscal management. I don't think that this ordinance, however well-intentioned it may be, is fiscally responsible, especially when it doesn't provide any genuine economic relief to the business owner. I've been speaking with many local business owners over the last two weeks about this ordinance, because we brought it up, and asked them truly if they thought it would make a difference in their businesses. I'm here to tell you that they all said they appreciated the sentiment, but agreed it would not help them. For these reasons, I prefer to continue looking at other ways to provide assistance to the community that has a real, meaningful impact while at the same time maintaining prudent fiscal management of the city's funds. I am deeply empathetic to the financial hardships that our local business owners are struggling with, and I applaud my colleagues' well-meaning efforts. But as mayor-elect, it's my job to help make the most responsible decision possible when it comes to having a positive impact on the city and its residents, and to not just act impulsively on something that might look good and feel good but doesn't accomplish much, or worse, can put the city in a bind down the road. For these reasons, I will be voting no on this ordinance, and then would be happy to discuss later ideas that these business owners gave me for relief. Thank you.
Any additional discussion?
Yes, I will say to the mayor-elect, it's admirable that you're looking at things
this way. It's admirable that you're looking at things this way, because you're probably correct. I don't, however, cotton to the term that this is being done impulsively. Let me make the point that, for those of us who aren't currently, and I did at one time, like you, running a business, every penny counts when you're in business, as you well know. I recall you telling me how your business was being told to do certain things that were going to require you to put out more money regarding what you put on sandwiches. Every penny counts. I will just point to the fact that, for those who are invested, the federal government has said, well, if you're in a tight space right now, and you don't want to take your required minimum distribution on your portfolio, you don't have to. In some people's cases, that would amount to $200. Some people's cases, it would amount to $2,000. In some people's cases, it would amount to a lot more. But you don't have to do it. So it's the same kind of forgiveness idea. I respect your decision, if you stick to it, to vote the way you want to vote. I always respect everyone's decision. So, as I said, I won't trot out my little fun game of, the First Amendment says you have every right to be wrong, but I do think in this case that you might want to look at it in a different fashion. It's not impulsive. People are in trouble, especially mom and pop businesses. And we're not getting the kind of help from the federal government for small businesses. The federal government looks at a small business as up to 200 people or something like that. When you've got five employees, and you're just trying to help everybody that you have on tap, then the $200 can make a big difference. So, again, I respect your position, as I know you respect mine. So, I'm going to vote for this, as my second indicated.
Any further?
However, this will not go if we don't all vote unanimously.
All right, I would just add to that, that I agree that this was not an impulsive decision, and I think that we put some thought into this. I think that when the government mandates a reduction in the possible business that a company can conduct, then any relief that the government can then provide is helpful. We're talking about small business, well, we're talking about all business in this case, but especially small business. They're providing the jobs that are allowing people to pay their mortgages. They also provide the system whereby the city collects sales tax revenue, which we wouldn't survive without. So, I'm going to vote for this, and we'll just see where that goes. So, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
No.
All right, the motion fails. Okay, we are now on agenda item 22A for possible action. Discussion of possible action regarding a proposed service agreement between the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education on behalf of the University of Nevada Reno and Carson City, on behalf of Carson City Department of Health and Human Services for COVID-19 Response Staff, to be effective December 31, 2020 through June 30, 2022, for an amount not to exceed $1,375,846.75 to be funded from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity for Infectious Diseases Grant. Who's going to take this? Nikki?
For the record, Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. So first, I'll walk you through some revisions that we asked and that were made. They're very minor. On the first sentence, this will read, "The service agreement," and in parentheses, "agreement" with quotations, "is entered into and is effective as of December 31, 2020 by and between Carson City, comma, this is where the change, changes happen, a consolidated municipality and political subdivision of the state of Nevada, comma, OBO Carson City Health and Human Services." Then we are deleting a city governmental agency. The next revision is within this same sentence, and it is talking about the Nevada System of Higher Education. Within the parentheses, we have quotations around NSHE. The next revision is on page two, and it is within the 4.2 paragraph, "Sub supervision by university." There is a period added behind Gerald Durmond's name. And that is the only revisions that have been made. I'll just give a little bit of history and explanation of why this, entering into this agreement is so important. We've got a number of individuals that are employed by the Nevada System of Higher Education, or ENSHI. You met one of them today, Tara. We've got an epidemiologist. We have got a biostatistician. We've got contact tracers. We've got disease investigators. These individuals were paid for, they're paid for through December 30 with state cares money, and the state went into this agreement with ENSHI to hire all these individuals. These individuals are crucial to our operation, and they are, have provided excellent service to our organization and, and help us do the job that we're doing right now. The reason that we decided to go ahead and use our grant money to pay ENSHI for these employees is that they've already been employed by ENSHI. They're full-time. They have benefits. And under the current situation, if they were to come to stop their agreement with ENSHI, come on with Carson City Health and Human Services, we would need to put them as contract employees, which do not have benefits, and we would lose the majority of these people. So, that's just some background of why we chose to go this route with these individuals, and just, if I can say again, that they are very crucial to our operations.
Any questions for Nikki? Go ahead, Lori, and then Stacy.
So, my question is, describe for me why the contract has to go so long. What are they going to be providing in the second year, all the way through 2022?
So, this, this is going to go for a while. We're thinking, you know, that with the, even the vaccine coming out, we are still, there's people that are not going to take the vaccine. And we will still be doing contact tracing. We have entered into this agreement for the time that we had the ELC grant. So that's where that date comes in.
Do you think at some point, even if the, is it considered like a communicable disease, so you'll always see contact tracing versus like the regular flu? At what point does contact tracing end?
So, contact tracing never really ends. We do contact tracing with many diseases. Do I see that with, you know, it's hard to predict, is COVID-19 going to continue being a reportable disease? That's where it more comes in, and that's done through Nevada revised statute of what is a communicable disease. So, you know, time will tell on that. But we do, with any communicable disease that is reportable, we do contact tracing.
So my questions were similar, and I guess to extend to that, I mean, it's essentially free money, so I don't have an issue with doing it. I guess my question is, will you be able to use these folks for things other than COVID? Or do you think it's so specific that they're only going to let you use them for COVID? So let's say we hit March of 2022, and we're at a point where COVID isn't reportable anymore, or the cases are so small that you're struggling to find work for them. Are there other things that you will be allowed to use them for that may free up our staff that normally would be doing this kind of work to do other things?
Thank you for that. There, there is a possibility that, you know, if we need to, that we can go in and modify with the state that grant. I see that even, even if we're not really needing them for the contact tracing piece, there's going to be a lot of cleanup here, too. You know, there will be final reports. There's going to be, we've got the attitude of continuous quality improvement. There's going to be a lot related to COVID that still needs to happen. So I see many different things I could have them work on.
So maybe what's more likely is our staff will be freed up to do their quote-unquote "regular" jobs, as you sort of shuffle all of the COVID wrap-up and, and so to speak, put a bow on it and let them do that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I would accept the motion.
I move to approve the agreement as presented with changes read into the record. Period.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is four zero to approve. We're now on agenda item...
Can I just say one thing?
No.
I, huh?
No.
Please?
Okay.
I just, I want to thank Mayor Protem Bonkowski and Supervisor John Barrett for your service to us and to the community. And I really appreciate your support, and we'll probably see you in different realms in the community.
Thank you, Nikki. All right, we are now on agenda item 22B for possible action. Discussion of possible action regarding an interlocal agreement between Carson City on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and Coroner, and Washoe County on behalf of the Washoe County Regional Medical Examiner's Office for Forensic Pathology Services with a retroactive effective date of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023, for not to exceed annual amount of $148,500, and a not to exceed total aggregate amount of $445,500 to be funded from the General Fund Professional Services Autopsies Account. Is Kenny here or online, or? All right, Carol, you going to take this one?
Just trying to find the unmute button here. Good morning, Carol Akers, Purchasing and Contracts Administrator. Yeah, this is just for the interlocal agreement with Washoe County Regional Medical Examiner's Office, a contract that obviously we, as a city, have used since, they are the only facility in northern Nevada. So the sheriff's office has used this ongoing contract. I believe the sheriff is on, also, online, if you have any specific questions.
It seems like we approve this contract annually, but this is for a three-year contract, so that's kind of nice to see, because obviously this is a critical service. It's not like we have the ability to provide the services for ourselves. So, thanks for bringing a multi-year contract. Is there any other questions on this item? Seeing and hearing none, then I would accept the motion.
I move to approve the agreement as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is four zero to approve the contract. Thank you, Carol. We are now on agenda item 23, 23A for discussion only. Discussion and presentation on financial highlights of the current year comprehensive annual fiscal report by Carson City staff and information from BDO USA LP relating to their audit procedures and the results of those procedures concerning the Carson City CAFR for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. Ms. Russell, good morning.
Good morning. Sherry Russell, CFO, for the record, also online.
I'm sorry, it's 2020, it's not 2022.
No, it's 2020, yeah.
Whatever.
Sorry, I'm not only going to get done with 2020, I'm just going to skip right over 2021 and go to 2022.
So, joining us for the presentation online should be Ralph Piercey, the Audit Director, Chris Farthing, the Audit Director, and Ralph Watkins, our Audit Partner from BDO.
Sherry, pull the mic closer, please.
I'm going to go through a financial presentation, and then turn it over to them for the required communication and audit results. Before I do that, I want to give a shout out to the Finance Department. We're a small department, and one-third of the staff had COVID, and, you know, with the remote auditing, it was beyond challenge this year. It's so much easier to sit down and walk somebody through something than try to explain it over the phone. So, we got it done, but boy, it was a struggle. And I really want to thank my staff and, and BDO for, for getting us through that. So, the first thing I want to do is just walk us through the document a little bit, like I normally do. The independent audit report is on page nine. BDO gave us an unqualified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that they're afforded to give us. Page six, the city received the Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting, again, for fiscal year 19. So I hit my 30-year goal, pretty excited about that. We're going for 40 now. 40 is my next goal. Uh, we're going for 40 now, 40 is my next goal. Uh, page 12 is the Management Discussion and Analysis, which is much more concise summary of this entire 200-page document. Uh, if you're going to read anything, that is what you want to read to get a picture of the city. Uh, page 22 is the Government-Wide Statement of Net Position, and the notes to the Financial Statement start on page 37, and this explains everything in large detail. Um, page 44 of the notes to the Financial Statement states that the city did meet all the statutory constraints, so we did not have any budget violations. We did have a few um net um funds that did show a negative net position, ambulance building permits and group medical insurance. And these are all business-type, so we have their full accrual. And all of the the purpose or the reason for this negative is the basically the OPEB and the pension liabilities that we have to record for GASB. So um, we'll talk about that as I go through this a little more. Uh, there are no material findings. However, the compliance audit is not done. Uh, there was no um uniform guidance on the CARES Act. So they're waiting for the what they call the supplemental. Oh, I had that written down somewhere because I knew I was going to forget. But it's their their separate audit procedures for each type of grant. And so they're waiting for that to be issued by the federal government before they can audit our CARES Act, which was material. It's definitely a major program for um 2020. So we do have until March 31st to issue that report, so it will be a separate report for the first time this year. So this is only the financial report this year. Oh, I almost hit the wrong button. So first, our governmental-type funds. Um, you can see everything is growing here, um, our assets liabilities and net position. Um, assets, um, we did have quite a few receivables. That's because everybody's behind because of COVID. Um, we just have a lot of state grants that we are waiting on. The CARES Act money was booked as a receivable. So the receivables did increase. Uh, we had capital assets and construction in progress went up. We know we have a lot of projects going on. And then the deferred outflows for OPEB and pension also increased. Um, liabilities increased due to OPEB. Uh, this had a 1% decrease in the discount rate, which creates an increase in the liability. Um, and it's a significant increase.
Was that from 8% to 7%?
No, uh, it's from 3.53% to 2.47%. We're required to use a certain rating each year, and there's there's three options, but all of them are very low.
So what is that discount tied to, that discount rate?
It's so it's the it's for the OPEB plan. So when they do their big actuary analysis of how much money that all the active employees and the retired employees are eventually going to be paid out of this plan, they discount it back to current dollars. And unfortunately, they have to use what there's only three options, and they're all around 2.5% this year. Last year, they were around 3.5%. And that's the GASB, GASB rule. And you'll see that kind of as we go along. So despite the increase in those liabilities, our assets did increase more. So we had um a $15 million increase in our net position for government-wide. So you can see here, revenues and expenses increased for fiscal year 20. Revenues were up because of the increase in sales and property taxes. Uh, again, we're still shocked about the sales taxes, but they increased. And then the expenses, uh, because this is from government-wide, includes that pension change. So unfortunately, that increased expenses pretty much are pretty high. Uh, and so we did have a decrease in net position, but um not, we didn't lose money. So we had 23.9 million in in uh income last year. This year, we have 15 million. So it just our income decreased a little bit. So a pie chart of all our governmental-type activities, um, just showing the types of revenues and property taxes, consolidate taxes, and other taxes is 72.7% of all of our revenues. For governmental-type funds, and then 12.8% um is the charges for services that we charge the public for landfill, parks, um, health court fees, those type of revenues. Here is expenses, and I just noticed today, I don't do this by percentage, I do it by dollars, which is inconsistent from revenue, so I might switch this up next year. Uh, but for revenues, uh, we spent 40.2 million dollars for public safety. They're number one, they always are. Uh, and then general government, 21.3 million dollars. And that's our, um, you know, our IT, our DA, city manager, board of supervisors, finance. It's all our overhead that the city has to pay in order to operate, facilities, maintenance. Um, and then as always, Public Works and Culture and Recreation came in third in the amount of money we spend, a little over 2 million or 10 million for each of those. So this is just a chart that shows the um total revenue expenses over a five-year period. And as you can see, revenue always exceeds expenses. Uh, we do this, you know, on purpose every year because we want to use that money for capital, the savings for capital, or keep it as a rainy day reserve. So that's what that difference is used for. Um, this slide shows ending fund balance, and I know this is where everybody gets excited because they want to know how much we have to spend. First, I want to show you, there was a decrease in the green bar there, the assigned, and uh, that was done on purpose. When we created the um 21 budget, we decreased the amount that is uh used for subsequent years expenditures. So a big portion of that assigned is is what we've set aside in the budget for subsequent year expenditures. To um, to kind of put numbers to it, in 19, it was 3.5 million that we had planned in the budget deficit spend in 20. And this year, um, it was only 1.2 million that we we planned a deficit spend in 21. So that's why that decrease is there. We had 5.1 million dollar increase in the um unassigned fund balance. However, don't get too excited because we kind of already spent all of that, or not all of it, but quite a chunk of it. So we had budgeted a beginning fund balance of about 7.5 million and therefore in 21. So therefore, this 17.8 million here, we're going to have to roll in and augment our budget by 10.2 million, 10.3 million is what we're going to have to add to the budget. Uh, now, when I came to you in September, we approved uh 4.6 million dollars in capital needs, 400,000 of that, or not of that, but another 400,000 will go to RTC and gas taxes from from the fiscal year 20 losses. We had about 800,000 dollars in supplementals that were approved. Um, 1.2 million dollars of the general fund is restricted, so that'll have to be put back in those restricted buckets for fiscal 21. And then there is another 200,000 in landfill that has to uh go into their capital because they made more than than we budgeted. So that's a total of 7.2, 7.3 million that was already kind of spoken for. Um, I will bring all of that to you in the first round of augmentations in January. Um, that leaves about 3 million dollars that is not yet spent. And I wanted to just kind of remind everybody as well as the public, um, that capital asset program did point out that we've got 21 million dollars in capital needs in the first year of that that capital asset plan. So I thought potentially a use of that 3 million dollars would be to move it to the extraordinary maintenance fund, to kind of put a dent in that 21 million dollars. Uh, so that's probably what we'll be recommending when we bring the augmentations for you, unless you have other ideas today. Uh, so the business-type activities, um, these, the assets decreased slightly and debt decreased by um close to 15 million dollars. Uh, both of these changes are due to the 2010 A bond payoff. Uh, so because this was a crossover refunding, it was a little weird. We had an escrow account that was in the city's name that had to be recorded on our books for 10 million dollars. Uh, and then in May of 2020, we paid that off. So that cash went away, and then also the debt went away. Now, we did have capital additions uh and work in progress that increased the assets, which is why assets only went down by 3.3 million. And then uh, we had normal debt principal payments in addition to the 10.1 million dollars. So that's why that decreased by 15 million. So uh, the total net position did increase by 11.2 million. And OPEB did have the same effect on these funds, it just wasn't the big significant effect because of that that crossover refunding. Ooh, look at how fancy I am. Sorry, I didn't even know I was going to do that. Uh, I forgot I set it up that way. So um, in the revenue and expenses of the business-type funds, um, the biggest change here is the transfers. Last year, we had 1.9 million that came out, that was an expense that came out of the ambulance fund for paying back those subsidies to the general fund. And then this year, we had a 9 million dollar or 900,000 dollar transfer of the property that we sold into the stormwater account. So that increased the revenue side as a transfer in. Everything was pretty status quo in these um, the utility funds for this year, other than those big, big transfers. Any questions? Okay.
I don't see any.
So, thank you. So um, I also wanted to echo Nikki's sentiments for Supervisor Barrett and Bonkowski. Um, I wanted to say it's been my pleasure working with you, and we'll we'll miss you next year on the board, I'm sure. Um, and now I'm going to turn it over to Ralph, Chris, and Randy from BDO. Hopefully, they're on the line.
Can you see me? I'm on the line. This is Ralph Piercy, I'm a senior audit director, senior sheriff's audit director, you could say. And I just take it to make it my pleasure. And uh, as I've said before, the city is a client to our firm, and we really, we also enjoy working with Sherry and her talented team, the dedicated team, who cooperated fully. They get a lot done with a relatively small staff, and uh, we enjoy working with them every year. Um, all things considered, practically speaking, uh, this year's audit went pretty well. Uh, that wasn't without some execution difficulties. The one Sherry admitted, and that was, we primarily had to work remotely. Uh, working remotely isn't really as efficient as face-to-face, and it literally added a couple hours of our time uh to our staff in order to complete what needed to be done. In addition, uh, this is the first year new um software was in place, and so we basically had to do uh first-year audit procedures for the second time in years. And uh, so both of that, both of those things did add some hours to the time that we had in the job. Um, should probably also make some of that through to you and any kind of charge. Uh, we looked at it as our investment in what we believe is a mutually beneficial relationship. There there was one additional last-minute complication that probably should have been Tom Donahue, um, uh, president of Pearson Taylor Inc., and was is the uh managed partner of the Nevada Operations, that has bought in to be the signing engagement partner for for this engagement. And near the end of the engagement, he became incapacitated, uh, not due to COVID at all, but we uh were able to bring in Randy Watson, the November officer, who jumped in there immediately and uh helped play play that role and had the stuff um had already done in order to fulfill the responsibilities of that role. And so I'm going to ask Randy to introduce himself, with his experience and quality. And then turn it over to uh Chris Farley, uh, who has managed the day-to-day activities of our audits the last couple of years, and he will share some specific audit findings. So Randy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Ralph. Um, I'm not sure if you can all see me, I still see Ralph still, but I'm an audit partner with BDO as well. Uh, like Ralph and PBD TK, um, our firm ACM merged into BDO about a month after PBTK. Um, at ACM, I led the governmental practice. I've been doing virtually only governmental for the last 12 years. And we have a substantial practice in what was ACM, and that merged into BDO. And so it was, you know, obviously not ideal, but it was a pleasure for me to be able to step in and and help out. Sherry was great, Sherry and her team, and helping us kind of get through the last, the last lap of this thing. Um, but you know, I appreciate everybody's effort in working through this, and I'm glad to be able to step in and and help out. Um, and with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Chris, so he can walk us through the audit rap document.
Good morning, and thank you to the board. It's a pleasure to speak with you again this year. Um, as Randy and Ralph already said, it was an unusual year, and it's been highly unusual for all of our audits, but we got through it, and I just want to say thank you to Sherry and her entire team again. Turning to our report, as noted on page three of our report, or page 17 of the Agenda Material, Agenda Item Materials, you'll see just a couple things that I want to point out. First, the audit was designed to provide reasonable, not absolute assurance. Um, and on that basis, we have issued what's called an unmodified opinion, or in other words, a clean opinion, which is consistent with our prior year audit. Turning to pages four and five, you will see that we had a couple of uncorrected and corrected misstatements in the current year. In regards to the corrected ones, the first one related to a new state grant program, where the city was able to apply the grant to expenses already incurred. And based on that, the revenue should have been recognized in 2020, um, and should not have been, so that was reversed and recorded in the 2020 report. Notably, the remaining deferred revenue balances are not that material, so we did not see this as a potential pervasive issue or impacting our risk assessment for the audit. The second and third items are really related to each other, just broken out to show separately the impact between governmental activities and business-type activities. The standards for this require that when there are changes in assumptions or other inputs for pension and OPEB obligations, those should be impacted or presented on a gross basis, not netted. Um, so that that was corrected, and while the amount's fairly large, it does have no impact on net position, and it's pretty small in relation to total assets plus deferred outflows and in relation to total liabilities plus deferred inflows. So we didn't consider that to be a material issue, but it was corrected. Moving on to page five, there are a couple uncorrected adjustments. The first one is actually related to a 2019 item that should have been accrued in 2019 but was missed. It was miscoded in the GL, so when the accounting team went through and did their year-end accruals, they did not identify it as something that should have been recorded in 2019. Uh, so that flowed through as an uncorrected adjustment in 2020 because we were not going to go back and restate for a misstatement of that magnitude. The second and third entries are actually related to the corrected items I mentioned previously. There was one other uh change related to changes in proportionate share of pension contributions that was not corrected. It was identified late, very late in the process, and given the magnitude of it, um, and given that it has no impact on net position, the management decided, and we agreed, that it wasn't material for going back and correcting because it would have created a lot of work to flow through the entire financial statements. Fourth entry relates to the adoption of a new accounting standard in the prior year. There was a change related to GASB 84 that required an adjustment in fiduciary fund. an adjustment in fiduciary fund presentation. Specifically, custodial funds are now presented on a slightly different basis. Previously, you recorded an offsetting liability for any assets that you held in trust for another government entity. However, under GASB 84, you record, you only record a liability when there's something that actually compels you to distribute those funds and there's no remaining actions to be taken by the government. And so because of that, you can have actually a net position where you have net assets exceeding your net liabilities in those custodial funds. And there should have been a net position recorded in the prior year of approximately $200,000 that was flown through the current year as current year activities, which we'll have to go back and correct the prior year. Moving on to the next page in our presentation, or actually the bottom of page five, we do discuss a couple of items related to the quality of the city's financial reporting. As Sherry noted previously, the city has received the GFOA certificate for 30 years and we haven't identified anything that causes us significant concern regarding that for year 31. All significant accounting policies and practices were consistent with prior years. We have not identified any alternatives that we believe would be more appropriate. Significant estimates appear to be reasonably supported and we did not identify any issues or indicators of management bias. Sherry mentioned the change in discount rate for pensions and OPEB and that's something on the purrs that really comes down from the state level. They actually prepare the actuary report and then just allocate that out to the various cities and component units throughout the state. And OPEB had a similar change just due to the change in interest rate environment that we're in. Discount rates are just down substantially over prior years and that resulted in a big increase in the liability. We have not identified any significant unusual transactions. Sherry mentioned the CARES Act loan, that is large, but the city has a lot of experience dealing with federal grants. So it's not really anything that's outside of the ordinary course for the city in the grand scheme of things. Financial statement presentation is consistent with prior periods and there were no new accounting pronouncements adopted in the current year. And we did not discuss any significant alternative accounting treatments. On page six, we have identified certain control deficiencies and suggestions for improvements. None of these were deemed to be of a magnitude that would require them to be reported as significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the, in the city's internal control report. And the first three are actually related to the uncorrected and corrected misstatements that we mentioned previously. And there's just a few things that management can do there to improve their process to capture those going forward. And the fourth one actually relates to an issue that was identified by internal audit earlier in the year. It just wasn't corrected by the end of the fiscal year and that's why we put it in our communication here. But we know that they are in the process of correcting that. On page seven, I'll just highlight that we did use internal specialists. We used a BDO actuary to evaluate the pension assumptions. And we used BDO pricing specialists to evaluate the fair value of investments and we had no concerns in those areas. And aside from that, there are no other items in our communication that I want to highlight, but Randy and I are happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I can answer questions as well. And the, the human resources department, that was fixed in August. Just so you know, it was just not fixed as of June 30th, it was fixed in August.
All right, I'm not seeing any questions. Good job, guys.
I was going to, I was going to add one thing. One of the board members, and I don't remember who, asked a question, was that a reduction from, from eight to seven? And the eight that you're thinking about is the return on investment assumption that the actuary historically has used. And that, and Randy or Chris, correct me, I believe it did come down too, but I'm not sure. It didn't, it didn't come down to two and a half, that's a different, a different assumption.
No, I think it's seven and a half percent. It's seven and a half still.
All right, thank you. Ask you to answer questions? All right, we're good on that, Sherry.
So that was the presentation, the first part. And then the next item will be the approval of the report that we just presented.
Go ahead, go ahead, Lori, Will.
So I, I want to look at page 181 because I think oftentimes when we have a CAFER, it's really a record of some of the tables, even though they're not audited. It shows you a 10-year history of what's been occurring in the city. So if you look on page 181, I just thought it was interesting that we were finally the lowest in 10 years in some debt and things like that. And I just thought the public oftentimes doesn't really see these schedules and understand that in our CAFER, but it is a wonderful resource document. And then I asked, I don't know if Dave Dolly is on the line? Because I also wanted to have him help the public understand the assessed valuation on page 182 of the CAFER. So I don't know if you're out there, Dave, because I can't see the plus seven people on the call. But is he there?
Yes, I'm here.
So if you could, if I may, okay. I was noticing that the residential assessed valuation has been improving over the years and looking like we've really had a recovery. And it's almost reflective in everything anecdotally we know about residential, right? Everything is up, 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 the market values are up. But can you explain or talk to us a little bit about what you see in the commercial, industrial stuff, especially this last year? I'd really appreciate that, Dave.
Absolutely. Thank you, Supervisor Bagwell. I appreciate you asking me to be here. The commercial and industrial is a kind of a unique beast in Carson City because we do have a number of sales that we use. However, they're very sporadic in our neighborhoods. And so trying to determine any kind of a land value is, is kind of difficult because you can't really use just one sale to determine what the whole value for those particular parcels should be in that particular neighborhood. This year, what we're kind of doing is we actually froze all of the commercial land values and industrial values because a lot of the COVID, we don't know what's going to happen with the market and we didn't know as far as how the businesses were going to be affected. So we actually froze all of the values for commercial and land values for, I'm sorry, for commercial and industrial values, specifically the land values. The improvement values are all recosted like they normally are, but the land values have all been frozen. You may also look at the tax exemption and see a huge increase in the amount of the actual exempt properties here in Carson City. It's not really that the, the number of the exempt parcels increased. However, all of the large parcels, when we determine a value for all of the parcels that are owned by BLM State Forest Service, United States of America, we use the, the BLM rental rates per acre. And so in 2019, they actually went up. We were charging $3,000 an acre and they went up to 6580 an acre. So you'll see that the value itself has increased. But other than a number, a few apartment buildings, low income apartment buildings, we've really only seen the value of the larger parcels increase because of that rent rate.
Thank you, Dave. I, I really just wanted the public to understand that you had frozen the land values for commercial and industrial and that again is another help to our business community. So I, I really appreciate that. And then I only had one other CAFER, if I may, just as an explanation for the public or just a discussion, to look on page 155, which is our building permit fund. And I, I'm assuming, but if you can just walk me through it a little bit there, that the reason it's negative is, is an OPEB discussion. But I'm just looking at the amounts and how small that is in salary and wages. So how much was the OPEB portion of why it's negative? Is it all of it?
No, the OPEB increase was about a $30,000 increase. However, the cost allocation went up quite a bit from last year. It was $227,000 last year, this year was $346,000.
Oh, sorry, can you come closer to the mic?
Okay, sorry, yeah, it was two, it was $227,000 last year for cost allocation. This year it was $346,000 for cost allocation. And again, that's determined by a third party actuary and the different services of the general fund that they're using. So they just had more activity in fiscal 19, or 18, I'm sorry, that was charged to 20.
You see that as a continuing issue that we're going to need to watch this fund because we have, I don't know, 400, some cash in there. But at a point in time, are we, I just want us to watch it and let us know if there's an issue.
Yeah, I'm definitely keeping an eye on it simply because of all the fire inspectors and, and public works inspectors that, you know, they need help with, that they want charged to this fund. And there just isn't a lot of extra money in the current year. They do have working capital that they can roll forward, but that's a one time.
Right.
Thing that they can't roll forward forever. So, so yes, I keep a close eye on this fund.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the other board members, that this is a fund we might have to monitor a little bit. Thank you.
Yeah, and as the economy, you know, gets worse, as we're expecting it to, you know, definitely we need to keep a close eye on this fund.
Any other questions or comments on that CAFER? I'm not seeing anything. All right, and if there's no other discussion or questions on the CAFER, I would entertain a motion.
I move to accept the report as submitted.
Right.
And thanks staff for all the great work.
We have a motion in a second. And I would also say thank you to staff. Been a pleasure working with you for eight years and.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure working with you guys too. You really, this board is just so cohesive. You really come at it from different angles and always make good decisions. So I just, you know, fingers crossed, hope the board coming forward will, will work the same way.
All right, all in favor on the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. Vote us 4-0 to approve the report as submitted. Thank you, Sherry. We'll move on to agenda item 24, Board of Supervisors Non-Auction Items, Future Agenda Items, Status Review of Projects International, Internal Communications and Administrative Matters, Correspondence to the Board, Status Reports and Comments. Start with you, Nancy.
Sure, the only thing I have is I just want to thank Acting Mayor Bonkowski and Supervisor Barrett for their service to Carson City and to thank Brad for stepping up as acting mayor during a very difficult time for the city. And as Mayor Bob would have said, thanks to both of you for the impact you've made in making Carson City a better place to live, work, and play. So we have a little token of our appreciation.
Thank you very much. Just got a picture of the entire board, including Bob. It's very nice. And it has a quote from Bob, "May you always be blessed with fair winds and following seas." Thank you. All right, anything, Stephanie?
Yes, thank you, Stephanie Hicks, Deputy City Manager. I echo Nancy's sentiments and just thank you as the acting mayor and supervisor Barrett for just all your support for your years on the board. I started with the city a little less than five years ago and asset management was one of my first projects. And the leadership and guidance through that has been amazing. I'm really excited with where we are at this point and look forward to, to where we head in the future with it. And your guidance was critical in that. So I thank you and you both will be missed.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anybody else?
Is this our time to give accolades? I was going to do it on final public comment, but this works too. We've been a great board and you two have been integral in that. And it's, I think I'm going to echo some other sentiments that I heard Sherry say. I hope in the future we have as great of boards that know how to work together, find compromise when we can, but that, what a distinct pleasure it has been to work with both of you and I'm going to miss you a lot. And hopefully you'll let me call you once in a while if I just want to run something past you.
Yep, I'm not planning on changing my phone number.
Yeah, I, I have a few comments. First, I'll start with business stuff. We had our CTA meeting on Monday this week. And just a couple of things I wanted to bring up. One, CTA is doing their part as well in terms of getting the message out about COVID. They have three videos online about lodging safety and restaurant safety with videos produced on what the lodging and restaurant industry is doing here in Carson City to combat the COVID pandemic and to allow people to come in and use those facilities. And they have one on museums and galleries as well and how they're open when they can be and safe. So kudos to them for doing those, producing them in-house. And talked about it before, we're almost there. The Kit Carson Trail, former Blue Line is almost back at 100%. All of the markers are placed. Big shout out to Public Works for the efforts that they put forth in setting 41 of the 48 markers. The seven that still have to be set are on state lands. And the CTA is going through the not easy process of getting approval from the state to place those on state land. We're hoping they're done by the end of February or so. But I hand it out to each of you and for the public watching. There is a brochure that you can pick up at the Visitors Bureau at the southwest corner of Carson and Washington Street for the Kit Carson Trail. And it's an abbreviated version, but it tells you where to go online to get more details for the 48 stops. And on the back, there's a map. And this is really a great historic representation of the Old West in Carson City and what our history is about. So I'm very excited that that is done. To John, thank you for your time on the board. Thank you for your friendship and thank you for your dedication to the city. Brad, to you, I, I was really trying to find two awards. One was the Golden Spectacle Award, I said spectacle, for proofreading. And the other one was a Golden Bladder Award because I've never worked with someone who could avoid using the facilities more than Brad. So I was, it's either going to be the Golden Bladder or the Elastic Bladder. Unfortunately, I could not find either of those online. But I'm going to continue to try. And you know, if you open a package and there's a bladder involved, it, it'll probably be from me. I, I, you know, very few people realize the amount of work that goes into what we do. And not, not that I'm complaining or that any of us would complain because we signed up to do this. But I, I am just in awe at the amount of work that you have put in over the years. And it, it's, I, it's been an honor to serve with you and it has been an honor to learn from you. So I apologize, I'm getting a little teary eyed because it, it's difficult. And I will miss your friendship and your counsel. So thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. John?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brad Bonkowski. Everything that Stacy just said is echoed by me. You are, you are a paragon of public service and I have already called Stacy that. And I know Lori will do a great job for the city. She is correct, we have been a good board. For me, these were the best of times and the worst of times, as I think Charles Dickens once said in The Tale of Two Cities. The best of times because I learned a lot and not the least of which was to occasionally keep my mouth shut. Secondarily, I served with another great person and Bob Crowell. I miss him, we all do. And I want to thank everybody here. The books I chose out of my personal library for you guys saved me some money, but by the same token, were chosen because I know you all and I. the same token, were chosen, because I know you all, and I hope you'll read them and use them well. This has been a great experience for me. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And I think to take this opportunity, you know, it's the last board meeting for John, for myself, and should have been the last meeting for Bob. And, you know, Bob was a great mentor and especially leader for all of us. I'm really sorry and sad that he's not here today to kind of enjoy the end of his public service career. I think we all have things that we would love to have said about him today, that we didn't get the opportunity to do that. You know, I was going to have a party today after the meeting, so that I could personally thank the people that I've worked with over the last eight years, because they're really the ones that do the work. Although I appreciate it, Stacy, the, you know, saying the amount of work that we do here, it pales in comparison to what the hundreds of excellent staff members we have do. You know, we sit up here and we, you know, dictate, hey, do this, do that, and they do it. Steph brings it back to us, and they do the heavy lifting so that we can implement policies to move the city forward. And since I'm not going to have my party, I want to take this opportunity to thank all the current and past members of the staff that we've worked with, the past supervisors, going back to John McKenna for my time on the board. Bob would have others to thank if he were here. Karen Aboud, the people that were part of the team that Lori mentioned that made the boards of the last decade work really well together. I won't say that they were great boards, I'll say that they were dedicated and that they got a lot done through their hard work and through being in the right place at the right time. You know, politicians like to take credit for economic cycles. I know from experience that that is not true, that politicians come and go, and they work within the economic cycle that they get. And I was fortunate enough to join this board in 2012, as we were coming out of the Great Recession, and I get to leave this board at the end of 2020, as we may be going into another recession. So I'll chalk that up to my ongoing luck, because I'll be able to say that for my entire eight years in office, that the economy got better every single year. I'd like to thank, you know, the members of our staff that run the AV. You know, they're in the background, nobody ever acknowledges them, and we can't work without them. I want to thank Nancy, and Stephanie, and Dan, and Jason, and Aubrey, and Tamar, you know, all the people that make us look good and allow us to do our jobs, and we couldn't do this without them. And there's many, many more. You know, I want to specifically call out Darren at Public Works, you know, who has the largest staff of city employees in the city, has done a great job of furthering our utility funds and our water systems. And I could go on for a long time. There are so many people that need, that really deserve to be called out, and so I'm going to take this opportunity to collectively thank you all at this point. And although I'll be around, don't call me unless it's really important. Mr. You.
I have the sense and the feeling that this moment would not be complete without the loquacious lawyer in the room chiming in for at least a second or two, and that would be yours truly.
Do we have a cutoff switch?
I'll try to keep this succinct. I just wanted to say that it has been and continues to be a great source of pride for me to serve as your board council. It's been a wonderful experience for me to work with the city, with each of the supervisors, this board and its staff, and the city manager's office. You know, as a 45-year-old lawyer today, I can tell you that I've had a lot of jobs leading up to this moment. I remember my first job as a 14-year-old in California was a busboy in a restaurant. And I can honestly say, and I know the old joke that, you know, lawyers are never honest, but I can honestly say that by far, this is the most enjoyable job I've ever had in my life. It's challenging, it's a lot of work, and for those people who tune in and watch these meetings, they understand all the things that we do on the record. What they don't see is all the hard work, the passion and the dedication that goes on behind the scenes, the engagement that we get from the elected leaders of the city. I just find myself to be very, very proud to be associated with this group. You know, the supervisors who are leaving after this meeting, Supervisor Barrett, Acting Mayor Bonkowski, we've worked together individually and collectively, you know, for these meetings on these agendas. And I just want to say, I give you my highest compliments and my regards for just how whip-smart, passionate, and dedicated you are. I've had the privilege of working with a lot of legislators in my tenure, and I can say, down, you guys are the cream of the crop. Carson City is very lucky to have you all. I'm very fortunate to have been able to work with you as an attorney. You keep me on my toes, you demand the best, you deserve the best, you make me better as an attorney, you make me better as a person. I really respect you all, and you've earned my respect, and I just want to say I thank you very much for that experience.
Thank you very much, Stan. All right. Nancy? Round two.
No, actually, the sheriff texted me, and he said, "Don't forget about him." He wanted to say something, so sheriff, are you on the line?
Am I on now?
You are, so be careful.
The earlier agenda item, I'm pushing buttons and pushing buttons and trying to jump in at an opportune time, but this is probably the best. Now, I do want to thank Brad and congratulate Brad, as well as John, and thank him and congratulate him. You folks have done an enormous service for the city. I think that on a personal level, those things where we've had to communicate constantly back and forth, I think that a lot of times, the public doesn't realize how many interruptions we cause in your life. And you folks have always stood up, you folks have always been at the top of the professionalism. I could not appreciate you folks more. Congratulations, and thank you for all that you've done for us.
Thank you, Kenny. It's been a pleasure working with you. You know, we work so intimately over the years. You know, I'm really, to use Stacy's turn of phrase, I am in awe of the job that you do and the responsibilities that you have to take care of that the public, initially, you know, I was not aware of. I mean, the amount of work that goes into making it look like nothing is happening is phenomenal, and for that, I thank you very much, and you have my vote for as long as you continue to run as sheriff.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. And you have ours. But yeah, I can assure you, we'll keep bothering you all the way up until our mayor elects our office.
All right. Is there anybody else that has any comments or discussion before we adjourn for lunch? Recession for lunch, excuse me. All right, seeing and hearing none, then we will be in recess until 1:30. Thank you all very much.